Okay, a call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, April 15th. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Sofa.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uwer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
Vocal Singer.
Here.
That's 13.
Thank you. A reminder tonight, if you need to come up and use the microphone, make sure it comes on, you can see the little green light, and that way we get you recorded. Next would be item number three, which is items to be removed, editor change. Do we have anything? Okay. Then we'll move on to item four, which is matters from the public, for anything that's not on our agenda this evening. Anybody here for anything not on the agenda? Okay, and we'll move on to item five, the consent agenda. Alderman back.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Resolution 2025-51-R, renewing Fermi fiber lease agreement for SOW number five. Resolution 2025-49-R, authorizing repair of Cherry Park Transformer. Resolution 2025-39-R, authorizing loan forgiveness to Water Street Studios for the loan year commencing March 14, 2024 through March 13, 2025. Resolution 2025-52-R, accepting the plat of dedication of part of Morton Street, 1125 Morton Street. Resolution 2025-53-R, accepting a plat of dedication for property along Windsor Lane and Wobonce Trail, 500 Wobonce Trail. Ordinance 2025-24, accepting a plat of vacation along Windsor Lane, 436 and 500 Wobonce Trail. Resolution 2025-50-R, authorizing agreement with Upland Design Limited for landscape architectural services for the public restroom plaza. Ordinance 2025-20, amending Title III, Chapter III, liquor control of the Batavia Municipal Code. I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion back second by Uwer.
I had one thing. Could we move the Fermi off the consent agenda so I can recuse myself?
Sure. Where is that?
First one.
The first one. So, Resolution 2025-51-R, renewing Fermi fiber lease for SOW number five. We'll take A and move that down to 5A. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Do I have to move that we approve the consent agenda as amended?
Yes, that was what I was gonna say. So that'll be our first vote, is that we amended the consent agenda, remove item A, place that as 5A. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the amendment is passed, and now we'll vote on the remainder of the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, then we will move on to item 5A, which is Resolution 2025-51-R, reviewing, renewing the fiber lease with Fermilab for SOW number five. Someone care to make a motion on that?
No moved.
Second.
Motion by Beck, second by Vocal Singer. All those in favor, we'll do a roll call on that one, sorry.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Shane.
Malone.
Aye.
Sofa.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Ayazi.
Malley.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal Singer.
Aye.
So that's 12, yes, one extension, one absent.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to item number six, which is Resolution 2025-57-R, approval of task order number eight, dam removal feasibility study with V3 companies in the amount of 19,950.
And as Rahat makes his way to the microphone on this, I just wanted to provide a little additional information. So, we actually did an RFP for this back in January, and the responses that we got, both of the companies that responded to it included a lot of engineering work, and so I know that that was not the intent of city council to do all of that engineering work, but rather just a feasibility study that looked at estimating what the costs of said engineering would be, and what are the steps in the process, what does a timeline look like, and also looking at the permitting and the feasibility from a permitting standpoint, and then also, if necessary, look at the, also the economic impact of implementing concept B. But Alderman, you were contacted me on Friday and suggested that if there were a number of you that did not think that concept B, that was designed by Hitchcock Group as part of the master river corridor plan, that that concept was what was maybe envisioned for ultimately what this canoe shoot or kayak shoot would ultimately look like, and he felt that maybe initially we should have a discussion whether, instead of doing this feasibility study that is proposed in the V3 proposal, that we look at hiring a design firm to work with us to further refine specifically what that canoe shoot should look like. I have reached out to a design firm that did the design work for the, the plan up in St. Charles, it's not an implemented plan, but they do have a plan for an improvement of that nature, and they hired Calibre, who are a Colorado design firm, and that firm provided me with a rough estimate of that kind of project would cost about $15,000 to do. So I'm just putting that out there, you know, we do have the concept B, if we decide to go in a different direction, then this is a sort of a departure from the master plan that we had previously approved.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that I'd said it a lot of times during the meetings when Hitchcock was presenting that we were making the decisions, that it's like, well that's not really what this would look like, because we had talked about it as a whitewater park, not a canoe shoot, so to speak, that it would be something more along the lines of what Yorkville had. So that's why when the proposal from V3 came, I'm like, well, they're not drawing anything out, and I think part of the, the struggle, maybe it's not, I mean, people who voted no probably still feel strongly about no, but not having an idea of what it could actually look like, and how much it would actually cost, we don't really have, we have estimates from Hitchcock, kinda putting the thumb in the air, estimate, and then having the economic impact study would also let us know, is it worth it? I believe it is. I believe that it will bring in the tourism and everything, which will eventually, you know, it creates an increase in the tax base with people coming in and spending money in the town. What was drawn by Hitchcock would not. I would, I would look at that and say that wouldn't do anything, because I would just be simplistic in design and not really do anything to draw people in as a tourist attraction. So I think it's important that we do this. My understanding is Calibre will also do those things, hey, here's what it's gonna take, here's the permitting you need, here's the, about what it's gonna cost, here's the processes you're gonna have to go through, I believe they look for funding and things like that, so we kinda get what V3 is saying they would do, plus a drawing of what it could actually look like.
So the 15,000 was simply for the design of it, it wasn't for the other things that are part of the feasibility study. So, for instance, I was using the process that St. Charles used as a sort of a guideline, and these were three separate things that were done. So first, they had WBK Engineering do the feasibility study that V3 has provided the proposal for. WBK, as a subcontractor, hired Calibre to do the design of the whitewater aspects of the plan, and then they hired a third contractor who, with expertise in the economic, doing economic impact studies, to provide that aspect of the project. So I think they're three separate pieces, but it's, you know, what order you want to do them in, so you could have Calibre do the design of it, so that there's a specific concept that you're looking at, and then have someone do the feasibility study and the permitting, and what all of the engineering is going to cost, and then the final piece would be that economic impact study.
Quick follow-up question on that then, because my understanding is Calibre does do some of those other elements as well, and however, V3 couldn't, I don't know how somebody could give a feasibility study on cost if they don't know what it's going to look like, to be able to say, because if you cost out what Hitchcock did, and it's like, okay, we're just gonna pile up a bunch of boulders, that's cheaper than actually developing something that is going to be a whitewater park. So I don't know how you could have a study that says how much it's gonna cost when you have no idea what it's gonna look like. That'd be like saying, hey, can you design me a, a four-bedroom house, and somebody designs, one person says, well, it's gonna cost you $200,000, because they made it a 1,500 square foot house, and the next person says it's gonna be $5 million, because it's a 10,000 square foot house. So there's, it's, I don't know how you could do it without what it looks like.
So my understanding in, in talking to Scott Chipley at Calibre, is that his, his firm's specialty is the design of the whitewater park. Engineering, you know, he would hire civil engineers to do the civil engineering aspects of it, which is V3's expertise that they're bringing, are their water, civil engineering, doing the bathyspheric and hydrological studies of what will be the impact of taking out the dam and putting in a structure like this. So, you know, it's, it's going to be some engineering firm, and we certainly have a lot of great experience with V3 on projects that they've worked on with us, especially in the recent past, and one of them that is winning awards with APWA.
I'm sorry.
Sarah?
A follow-up on that, you said you talked to St. Charles, did they use, do you know who they used for their studies? Did they have different firms do these different kind of areas of specialty?
Yes, they've used different firms for it, so they used WPBK Engineering, another local engineering firm that we have also used in the past, and was a subcontractor to Hitchcock Group, as a matter of fact, on the master plan. So WBK was the, the main contractor, and then they hired Calibre as a subcontractor to do the designing of the feature within that project. This is different than here, where really our first project was our master plan, where in it we had said concept B is the one that has been selected, but, you know, we can take a different, if we feel differently about it now, and we want to see a different feature, then we can do that. Alongside this, you know, I should just bring up that the Park District has been a partner in taking a look at this, because the city owns the dam, but the Park District owns the pond that will be affected by whatever is done there. So we should maybe keep that as part of the discussion as well.
George? Yeah, I'm glad you said that, Laura, because I was gonna say, I know they're responsible, the Park District, for much of the programming, so how could we make guestimates on their behalf ahead of time, pay a consultant to give us an estimated plan without their input? Right? If, if they're gonna be influencing the programming to a great degree, are we just gonna bring them suggestions for programming? Is that what you're thinking?
No, 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 I'm, it's a suggestion. The discussions that I had with different members on, on that, and the discussions we had with them was whitewater park, not, not a chute. So the whole thing with the design is just like, this is what it would look like, if it, I mean, it could come out and look exactly like Yorkville Dam, and what many of those on the, on the Park District had said at the time, yeah, they envisioned having whitewater, not canoe, whitewater kayak rentals and stuff like that. So that was what, one of the things they had said, but that's really probably about the only programming you're gonna have with that. I mean, you could rent tubes, I see that down in Yorkville, so that type of thing. But that was based on the discussions we had back then.
And then just as a level set, a lot of this all came about, the myriad discussions, based on the assumption that we were given money to remove the dam, which as of right now, we have zero confirmation on.
Correct.
Which maybe two years from now, maybe five years from now, maybe never. So we could be spending 15 grand here on this study, 10 grand here on that study, 15 grand on this study, all to just keep on the shelf until or unless we ever find out if we're gonna get funding to remove the dam as it is. My assumption is the turnaround time for some of these studies might be six months. If we potentially have years ahead of us, is there a reason to do this now until or unless we get a green light from the IDNR that we're gonna get some funding to remove the dam? I mean, to me, $45,000 isn't a liar, you know, some massive amount of money, but let's say it's six years from now that we hear finally that the IDNR is gonna give us money. A lot can change between now and then. So doing two or three studies right now, while I agree I'd like to see that information, that information could be a 30% delta from what we're looking at five, six years from now, potentially. If you're directing a question to me, yes, because I know there's been times where it's like, hey, you've gotta be ready to move on some of this funding that can come in, because if you're not ready to move, you don't have a plan, and then you're like, oh, shoot, we've gotta have a plan, and then we spend six months or more trying to put that together, and we lose our place in line. That's a reason you would wanna have something like this, that we know approximately, yes, the cost will, yes, the cost will change, you can get a new cost estimate based on, oh, here's the design, how's that change? Was? I, I thought there was no design that's relevant, because they're only paying for removal and nothing else.
Yes.
Well, we don't know, there's IDNR, but the Army Corps, the Army Corps, we can help dictate what the Army Corps will do, because that's-
Is that true?
There, the Army Corps' funding comes straight from Congress, so, and that's, things like this have changed before. I have a friend that used to work for the Army Corps, and he's like, yeah, there's, you know, influence of Congress will tell the Army Corps, yes, do or do not do that. I'm not saying it will, but there is flexibility in that, where they have the ability to fund or not fund, depending on what kind of direction they get from Congress. Today's probably, this climate is probably not the best for that. No, no, what I'm talking about though is, the only thing they said they were gonna fund or unfund is the removal of the dam, right?
Yeah.
That was IDNR. I don't think the Army Corps of Engineers has said anything-
They have.
-but they have backed out of doing anything right now, until they have a plan to remove all the dams, because that's where they wanna go.
Army Corps has said that they will not pay for our dam removal if our plan is to replace it with something else. The only, they would, they would assist us with dam removal if we agreed to concept A.
That was the IDNR, that was at Army Corps?
Army Corps.
What did IDNR say about the plans?
IDNR said that they have realigned their priorities alongside Army Corps to maximize the number of dams that they're going to be able to remove, so they will prioritize IDNR dams that they already own, and communities who have agreed to remove the dams and not put anything back.
So, a comment and a question, I guess I'll start with a question here real quick. It was back on, you know, March 25th, that we had our two proposals that were sort of so far out of, out of range, you know, six figures or whatever. And I, you know, I do see here in the proposal from V3 that, you know, we had some back and forth, we got closer to what we're, what we're envisioning. Did we reach out to the other proposal as well, and have sort of a back and forth with them about just kind of what?
So, so V3 was the most qualified among the two proposals?
Yes.
So we went back and forth only with V3?
Yeah. The, just the second, I'm just gonna make a quick little comment on it, I mean, the, the dam and the river are kind of the heart of our town, right? It's kind of like, it's a lot of who we are and what we are. So first off, I do think it's kind of appropriate to revisit this. I think George brings some excellent points up, that like, we kind of don't know what the future's gonna be. The IDNR and the Army Corps have shifted, it sounds like fundamentally, from when we first even began the concepts. So it, you know, I hear the terms that, yeah, if we change anything, we would be deviating from the master plan, but the master plan is sort of written under certain level, certain assumptions that are maybe no longer true. It feels to me that it makes a lot of sense for us to be maybe a little more focused, a little more intentional, and kind of maybe reopen this can of worms in, in a bigger sense than maybe we're currently envisioning. I don't know what that looks like, I don't know if this fits that, I don't know if reaching out to someone else fits that, but it does feel like we kind of need to reevaluate, kind of take a couple steps back, which sucks and means more work, but it's a pretty important project, it's probably the important project in town, in a lot of ways.
And I really feel like we have to incorporate in that what we're gonna end up doing with the pond, because if the dam comes out on its own, on purpose, or however we do that, there has to be some way to maintain the pond. And to me, the simplest way is take out what's on one side of the river, in the natural channel of the river, and put it into the artificial channel of the river to make the pond. And that way, we're reusing what's already there in a different place. To me, that's gotta be the simplest way to do it, and then we just have to figure out, how do we, you know, maintain the pond to a level that actually is functional, so that the Park District could use their paddle boats out there, and it could be a clean waterway, a clean pond that's out there, and then decide how we fund the other side of the river, whatever we wanna do with that, to try to maintain or create, you know, a usable section of the river for, you know, kayaking, whitewater, whatever it could be out there. Now, I don't know how responsive IDNR, Army Corps of Engineers is gonna be to doing that, because that really changes the dynamic of the river that's out there today. So I think that that's gonna be something we have to overcome, and I don't know if we wanna spend this money now without any kind of contact or assurance from DNR and Army Corps of Engineers, that they're willing to move forward with something that looks like that, or is staged like that, because I think, in all reality, the more we talk about this, and the more we don't do any, we don't have any action plans, the closer we're getting to that dam failing to the point where we will have to make emergency choices at that point, and that's not gonna be easy, because that's something that we're gonna have to pay for, because I guarantee you, if that dam blows out, they're not gonna say fix it so you can do the other things you want, they're just gonna ask to remove it on an emergency basis. Your honor?
Yeah, I certainly support the idea that we explore what we need to do here, and I, I agree with Mark, I think there needs to be a plan put together on the table. But what I wanna share is, is that in the last several months, I've had the opportunity to talk to, I don't know, a couple dozen mayors, most of them have a dam themselves on the Fox River, and everyone has gotten the same conversation we've had with IDNR, that they're not gonna do anything for a while yet, and then the further you get into this, some say they've talked to their congressman, and the congressman says, whoa, everything that's happening in Washington right now, we don't wanna mix this in there, let's, but it may be a couple years before things blow over there. So I don't think this is anything that's got an emergency answer to it, and it's something that's easily gonna be done, and I guess, depending on what it is we end up doing, that, this could be a lot of money. I mean, it may have to be a referendum or something in Batavia, and other towns have said the same thing to me, you know, there's one of our neighbors here that I'm led to believe maybe over $30 million in river work that they're talking about, which they don't know necessarily where they're gonna get it, and they may have a referendum going, so there doesn't seem to be any ready pots of money around to be paying for any of this, so this is not anything that I think any of us can sit here and think is gonna be here two years from now, or whatever it's going to be, because there's a lot of moving parts to this thing, unlike most things I've ever seen, there's just federal issues, state issues, and then each town has its own local issues, and each one has a little bit different dynamic to it. So this is a complex issue, and right now, so I had, I had lunch with two mayors today, and they were both saying, as far as they can determine, the federal government, specifically the congressman, they don't wanna talk about this. This is right off the table, over with everything else that's coming out of Washington and going out of the White House, there's not any support for playing around with dams at the moment. So just, we, I don't think we need to worry about doing something immediately, because nothing's gonna happen anyway.
Chris, you wanna go ahead, so you got your hand up?
Uh, yes, thank you. So this all goes, I'm gonna be voting no for spending any money on this right now. This all goes back to my original position in terms of Alderman Malone's indication about maybe revisiting things, we all knew that they were never gonna pay for a removal of the dam, if we went forward with option B. That's why I was always adamant about doing option A, as Alderman Wolf had just discussed about, you just try to remove the dam, and you put the berm over on the other side to maintain the pond, figure out the best way to maintain the pond at that point in time. It was also the least expensive option, and it was the option where, at least at that point in time, we knew we were going to have, we thought we were going to have funding from the federal government to pay for the dam removal, which would have simply left us with the costs incurred in making a berm to maintain the pond and figure out what needed to be done in terms of a pumping system or otherwise. So, you know, this is what I was worried about at the beginning, this is why I voted no, this is why I've consistently voted no on that option, that's why I'm gonna vote now, vote no now, to spend an additional 15,000, 20,000, $45,000, whatever the case may be, conduct a feasibility study on something that is simply not feasible, from a fiscal perspective as it relates to the thing here.
Tony?
Yep, I recall that this council voted that we were gonna have, we wanted option B. That was the direction we were given, and I found it quite alarming to see that we're gonna hire some, uh, engineering firm to look at just removal of the river as one of the options. That's, that's not what we, the directions we, a removal of the dam.
We aren't.
That's, that was part of the, the V3 proposal that I saw.
It's to look at concept B, correct?
It has do-nothing removal of the dam, and also doing the whitewater option too, so it is looking at all three options, and-
That's what I found concerning, because this council said what the direction we wanted. Now, Mayor, I understand what you're saying, that, you know, why rush into this, we could be dealing with an emergency situation, like Alan said, we should be prepared. Now, our strategic plan talks about the river being an asset in this town. If we do nothing, and that dam goes out, and that river shrinks down, one of the greatest assets we have is going away, and that's what I fear. If we don't do something, or start planning something, we're gonna find ourselves in a position where we can't. So if we, if we don't start planning and looking what could be, we're never gonna be, have the, the best use of the greatest, one of the greatest assets we have. So I'm fully with Mark, that we need to see what this, what the possibilities are, and what it can look like, and, and yes, it's, it's spending some money, we're not talking, spending a, a ton of money right now, but knowing what it can be, so we can start to, to plan to, to get, we can never have the best possible outcome if we don't envision the best possible outcome.
I guess what I would say is, I think, if we're gonna spend money on this, I think what we have to do is make sure that the first step of it is, is what happens, or what do, what does V3, with all their connections to the engineering side of this, and permitting side of it, what would their, you know, say our doomsday thing happens, we get a really bad ice floe one spring, and it breaks the side of the dam apart, and it drops six feet, how, how do we permit, or how do we step forward into what we think we're gonna end up with, to at least remove what's there, and start to build the berm or build the berm? You know, so that way we enable the pond to remain, because I think that's one of the big things that came out of all of those discussions, was that whether we remove the dam or not, we have to figure out how to maintain the pond.
And we voted that we wouldn't do a berm, we voted that we'd have some kind of weird system, some kind of empowerment to keep the dam, or keep-
Yeah, and that I don't-
That's what this council decided.
I know, I understand that, Tony, and the thing is, is I don't know that that's something that they're gonna permit, because I don't know that they're gonna say we can go back in, in the channel of the river, the natural channel side, the east side, and put more back into the river than we take out. That's always been one of the things that, when we redid the dam, or when we redid the bridge, we couldn't put more footing back into the river than what we took out, and, you know, that's one of the things that they always worry about, on trying to go more natural with the river, is when you remove something, you don't put more back in.
But we certainly won't have anything if we don't have some kind of plan, or some kind of vision.
Abby?
Sarah, had her hands up first.
Sarah, head or hands up first.
Okay.
Oh, sir. I have several thoughts. I am on board with having a plan should the dam fail. Should an opportunity arise, I would like to be prepared, as you both have stated. I think it would be smart to see, and all the things Alan, that you're talking about, I think that these, this study, or these studies would give us more information to start these conversations. And we've had hours and hours and hours of conversations with us, with the Park District and everything. And as Alderman Lea said, this is what we decided on. So I think that, moving forward, that these studies will hopefully continue to give us more direction, and we can keep our foot on the gas with getting something done. I look at those projects from 20-plus years ago, when they weren't able to get something done. And I don't want to just keep picking the can down the road, so.
We didn't have any consensus at that time of how we were going to move forward.
Right.
And that money ended up going to Yorkville.
Yeah, I know.
You know, by the time we got around to getting it on as a referendum, and even talking, to that point, they already started, and they already had plans approved by the time we got there. So we lost that money. Because I think they spent $8 million down there or something.
The state.
The state did, yeah.
So I guess I'd like to know, as a move forward point, if the vote is still the same, you know, if the, if the vote for B is still moving forward, I think we should operate like that is the, that is the consensus, and that is the move forward plan. I'd be open to looking at Calibre, Calibre, whatever, a, Calibre, thank you. I've been reading it and thinking it in my head all day, and knowing it was never right. Looking at a proposal from them, side by side with this, to see, at least to compare apples to apples, if we're going to pick one or the other, or if these are complementary proposals, we have an idea of what the total cost will be to move forward. And I would hope that the first thing that would be checked in a feasibility study by whoever does it, is if it's possible permit-wise. And if so, then it's a really cheap study. Hopefully, we don't pay the full cost of the study. If they come back and they say, we checked, it's not possible by the state, and now we can move on to something else, and let's shift these funds somewhere else. So I would move that we table this until we have the other proposal to look at alongside, and then take a vote then.
And do you think, Rod, with V3 and their contacts and everything, that they'd be able to give us an answer through that, this 15 grand, that they would come back with an answer and say, yeah, this is never going to get past IDNR, or Army Corps of Engineers? Or they say, there's a chance for that? Or yes, we can do that?
Their proposal talk about that, that if we are doing a whitewater feature, then what it would take to get it through the IDNR and Army Corps, how much time it will take, and, and a big, you know, top-level 30,000-foot number without doing a full design of it.
Yeah, because I think that's important for us to have an idea of, you know, we may all say, yeah, that's what we wanted, and that's what we approved. But if it doesn't stand the proverbial snowball's chance, then I don't know that we want to keep pushing down that road. You know, I think that we have to be ready to do something. And I think we have to have some kind of assurance that we have a rational plan that they're going to say okay to, or they're going to say, yeah, modify these five things, and then we'll do it. We'll say okay. Mark?
The only thing I wanted to add is, I'd be afraid to go back and say, hey, let's take a fresh look at this. And the reason is, we're not rushing into this. It was two years ago that we had the conversations with the Park District. We had multiple presentations for the public. We had a citywide poll to the public, and the public said B. And that was, that was the vote by the public. And that's who, who elected us. And if, I think we should move forward, I'd probably do both. I maybe, like, merge the two and say, hey, V3, can you contact Calibre and find out how the two of these things work together? And then you just, you kill two birds with one stone, and make sure that there's no overlap in what the two are doing. But then we move forward, instead of, we've, we've done nothing for two, we've done two years on this, and then, but we've talked about this for years prior. And so every time we stop moving forward, we're putting ourselves at greater risk of, one, missing money, you know, you mentioned, lost money to Yorkville, because they were ready.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
We weren't.
That was a long time ago, but, but they were ready. And they, I... Well, no, I think the option that they had was much simpler choice for them, to be able to do it.
No, I understand. I'm not saying, this is apples and oranges. It's still apples and oranges, because they still have a dam, but...
And I don't think...
But what I was going to, let me finish really quick. I don't know if Montgomery actually was going forward, because like, Montgomery was ready, I think. I don't know if anybody knows, or Laura, if you know, are they getting their dam removed?
I think so.
Because they were ready.
Yes.
The money was there, they were ready. Now, again, at one point, IDNR said, we're not going to give you all the money. We'll give you some money to help remove the dam, and then the rest of it is going to be on you. So there's varying degrees, and we just don't know what that is. And we can't know what it is, because none of us do this for a living, and we're all just going to be speculating.
And I think we still have never received a firm commitment from the Park District to, to their end of it. And, you know, trying to manage anything, or program anything out there on the river, if we build, you know, whitewater, you know, I just look at the simplistic little paddle boats that they have out here that get used once or twice a year, instead of all summer long.
But the Park District doesn't need to have programming for people to come out and do whitewater kayaking on their own. Yorkville does not have programming.
I understand that, but they also have a fairly good industry that pushed that to start with. You know, they already, they already had the float trips and the canoe trips down there 30 years ago. And they've been same, I think the same people are now running the other trips.
And the impetus for the removal of their dam was that they had two fatalities very close in time prior to that, which is another reason why the government was willing to provide the funding. I feel like I have direction to go back and talk to both of these companies, to see if, you know, what would be in one's wheelhouse versus the other, and/or if both feel that they would be able to provide all the services. It sounds like it may be that combination, but I can come back with more refined proposals.
Okay, so then you want to make a motion to table it?
I move we table this.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ariza.
Hi.
Lancy.
Hi.
Beck.
Hi.
Peeper.
Hi.
Malone.
Hi.
Sulfur.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Lehman.
Ayazi.
Hi.
Malay.
Hi.
Uwe.
Hi.
Suron.
Hi.
Vocal singer.
Hi.
That's 13.
All right. That being tabled, we move on to item seven, which is Resolution 2025-56R, waiving the formal bidding process for approval of contract with electric conduit construction in the amount of $450,245, including a 10% contingency for the relocation of electrical infrastructure related to the Peace Bridge pedestrian ramp construction. Rod?
Okay, so I apologize that, that title didn't get updated, but for the city council, we will. But the next, or this item and the following two items, they're all related. So I'm gonna speak about all three items in, in one memo. So city council, back in, I believe, September of 2024, approved a design contract for V3 Consultant to design a pedestrian and bike ramp for the Peace Bridge, purely because if you are riding on the west side of the river, and you want to go to the east side, using the Peace Bridge ramp, then you cannot get down on the east side without dismounting your bike. Or if you are a mom with a stroller, and you want to, you know, walk in the east side, you cannot just go to the east side without, you know, taking your kids out of the stroller and taking the stroller down. So that's the reason the city council approved that design, consult, design contract. The design contract is now 80% complete. Last month, I believe, towards the end of February or early March, we came to the city council to show a concept that we were working on. So the design is almost 80% complete right now. One of the things that we have been discussing with V3 for last few weeks is that how we can expedite the project. The primary reason is, we still have some permits to get from IDNR and Army Corps. And also, the design is not complete yet. We, it will be completed by end of this month. But if we go through the traditional bidding process, that takes about another five to six weeks, because we have to get the bids, get the bid numbers, and go through the city council approval process. So by the time we are done, we are well into June, middle of June. And from our scheduling look at it, it looks like it will take about six months or so. So from the time the council approves the project, we'll be well into December to finish the project, you know, substantially complete the project, if you want to say. Now, once you get into October, you don't know how the weather will look like. You might get a lot of snow, you might get, you know, I don't know what you're going to get. So we have been talking to them about a concept that we haven't used in the city for a while. I believe the River Street was done with this concept, and there is a fire station was done. It's called the Construction Manager at Risk. That means we'll hire V3 as the construction manager, and before even the design is completely complete, they reached out to some of the subcontractors and got pricing, saying, okay, this is the amount of concrete we are going to place. This is the concept looks like, what's your price? There are some items there that V3 could do, but some of the items that they cannot do at all, right? Like railing, you know, they cannot, V3 doesn't provide railing. They reached out to two subcontractors who will provide the railings. But V3 could do excavation. They could do, like, the underground storm sewer work. So they reached out to other consult contractors, as well as they provided their own number, saying, okay, this is what we would charge the city if we did that storm work. But what is somebody else going to charge us? So they, they provided their number, and they provide a, they provided other subcontractor's number, and they picked the one, whoever was the lowest. Like, you can see Performance, who has worked for the city before for underground work, they picked them instead of them, themselves, like V3, to do that underground work, you know. So, so it's a concept that is being done where you know where, what your project limit is, what you want. And, and it's been done successfully in many places, including City of Batavia. It's just that we have not done it in recent, recent years. So you, you will see the construction prices that V3 has provided. It's in their contract. The contract is pretty long. You'll find it somewhere. There are some allowances. Allowances are those items which are not big-ticket items. They're like smaller items, that they haven't got the prices from the subcontractor yet, or we are going to beat it out, you know, as we move along with the process, you know. And there is another big component that is in this memo, is the electric relocation work. So when Larson Becker parking lot was there, we had put some conduits and electric infrastructure in the parking lot. But since then, we obviously have purchased the land, you know, put a parking lot, but the electric conduits is still there. Now, because this ramp is going to be ADA accessible ramp, it has to meet all the ADA specification, those electric conduits are in conflict. And then, in the future, when this parking lot gets developed as a mixed-use or something else, those electric conduits are going to be still in conflict with, with the future development. So we talked to our electric department, and they think that it's good to relocate all those electric conduits now, and go into the River Street, and, and shoot them along the River Street going north, you know. So relocate them now. That way, the ramp can be designed, can be constructed as designed right now. Because we looked at redesigning the ramp, you know, and it's kind of looked weird, what V3 came back. I said weird, but I just didn't, you know, we didn't like it, you know. It's like going, going east and west, and all of a sudden, you're going like a loop-de-loop, you know, on, on north-south, you know. So it just didn't look the right. So that's the concept, you know, so far for a construction manager at risk. I know I have talked a lot, any questions so far, that I'll invite.
Do you have questions?
I'm interested.
I said the loopy loop.
So... I have a couple of questions. So the, what you're saying with the, removing the electric conduit, it serves two purposes that, you know, it'll save us in the future by doing that now. So that, okay, that makes sense.
And the other thing, sorry, I, so V3 could start excavating now. So the first thing that we are going to do is install that storm sewer going to the river, right? That's, that's the, that actually runs under the Pal Jewish restaurant right now. So we're going to cap it, and we are going to reroute that under the ramp going into the river. So they could do most of that work, like 80% of the work, because we still have to get the permit from IDNR. So they will do most of it, and they will take a break for two to three weeks, when the electric contractor will come in, and they will install the electric conduit and, and get out of the way. And then they can keep digging for the ramp itself.
And then the funding, is this, the TIF funds?
Yes.
Will that, what's, what's the balance in the TIF?
Actually, both TIF 1 and TIF 3 have balances around 2.7 million at this point. So there's 5.4 million available between the two TIFs. And this is the last year of TIF number one. But TIF number three will continue through 2039. At this point, it is generating $550,000 per year in increment.
Okay, so...
Expected to increase in the future.
That'll be, we can use TIF 1 and TIF 3?
Correct. You may use funding from an adjacent TIF.
All right.
I recall that the last time that we talked about this, a couple of weeks back or so, you mentioned that for the summer, there's a way that you'll be able to kind of, you know, block off for the farmer's market. With this new change, is that going to, with the electric, is that going to affect the farmer's market at all?
No. So the ramp, I'm saying that the connection between the River Street and the Peace Bridge, we are going to take out half of it anyway, because the wall, retaining wall that's on the north side of that connection has to be taken out. So, so we are going to maintain at least five feet, and we have talked to V3 about that, five feet of, for pedestrian connection, if you want to say, to people to go between the Peace Bridge and, and River Street. That's where the conduit, not that five feet, the other five feet that they are taking, going to take out for that retaining wall, that's where the electric conduit is going to go. So as they take out the retaining wall, and I said, they are going to take like two weeks' break, that's when the electric contractor is going to come in and put their conduit exactly where we have taken out the retaining wall. So, so it's not going to impact any pedestrian activity, or even the farmer's market. And we have written in the contract that no work on Saturday at all. It's, it's very clearly written. So, and V3 knows about all that. And I should mention, we have Mike and Kurt from V3 here. So if there is any question that I cannot answer, they're here to help me out, so.
Do you know, do you know what type of barrier they're going to put up along that? I mean, is it going to be just a little concrete barriers? Or what are they going to use for safety to keep people away from that? Because I mean, there's a ton of kids that'll be down there on Saturdays.
And so I had that discussion with them. My preference would be have like a chain link fence, so that, you know, it's like completely blocked, locked off. We'll, we'll see whether there is opportunity to put concrete just over the wall.
And the chain link fence sounds better to me, because the concrete, yes, it's a solid barrier, but kids will go right over the top of that. So...
Anybody else have questions?
It was vaguely alluded that this would affect some other projects we're looking at TIF 1 for, like the modular bathroom right there. Is that correct?
So we do not anticipate that we would still, I'm sorry, I should just say, we can still move forward with the public restrooms. We still have enough TIF funding to move forward with that.
Okay.
Yeah, because I think that's important for, for that area, to get those done. I mean, we've talked a lot about it. I'm sure people are going to look forward to that, being part of that. And then, you know, I'm just concerned about the safety.
One thing related to the project, not necessarily to the resolution at hand, but it was brought up in some discussions when we were talking about the public art potential for this, that maybe it would be a good practice for Batavia to have some sort of a policy, like a 1% ... like a 1% for art for all of these public improvement projects, to set aside 1% or half a percent for public art every time we do one of these. Had we done it for maybe like the Wilson and Prairie, you know, a gateway sculpture or something. And just always be mindful of, of what we could also do with public art for each of these projects.
I would say on top of, or just beautification or whatever, you know, something to make it unique. The little, the little touches is what, you know, gets people, oh, it's a quaint little touch. You know, I mean, it's all the little things.
Any other comments, questions?
So before you take an action, so the electric numbers kind of kept moving a little bit just because we were still having discussion with the contractor. And we are still having conversation with him. We'll have a final number for the city council, but at this time, the number that we have, it's about $541,000 instead of the number that you read. That's including the 10% contingency. So their latest proposal is 492, some change. So if you add 10%, it's about 539. But we'll have exact numbers and updated resolution for you during, during the city council meeting when you take action. I apologize for not having the right number right now.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, and then I think we'll start off with Resolution 20. You have a question?
No, I was just, what, could you quote that number again? In here it says 583, and.
That's, that's inside the resolution, but we have, because it, it came up in, in last week and a half. And we have been trying to redesign. So we have looked at whether we can redesign it without relocating the electric. But finally, we figured out we cannot do it. So we reached out to electrical contractor and, and it's, it's a pretty hefty sum. So sometimes they get things right and we are like, I don't like the numbers, you know. I, I want you to refine the number.
And where do we believe it to be?
It will be, it will not be more than $580,000, I can tell you that. It's actually gonna be less than that.
Okay, great, that's what I like to hear.
Yeah, the number that you are saying, that's the top number, but it has already come down by $40,000.
I will ask for a motion to recommend a council Resolution 2025-56R, waiving formal bidding process and approval of a contract with electric conduit construction in the amount of $450,245, including a 10% contingency for the relocation of electric infrastructure related to the Peace Bridge ramp construction. Beck and Malone, roll call please.
Raza.
Hi.
Lancy.
Hi.
Beck.
Hi.
Peeper.
Hi.
Malone.
Hi.
Sofa.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Lehman. Ayazi.
Hi.
Malay.
Hi.
Uwer.
Hi.
Saran.
Hi.
Vocal singer.
Hi.
That's 13.
And then item eight would be Resolution 2025-54R, waiving formal bidding process and proving contract with V3 Construction Group Limited for the amount not to exceed $2,579,820, which includes 10% contingency amount to construct the Peace Bridge bike ramp. Motion? Second. And Malone, roll call please.
Raza.
Hi.
Lancy.
Hi.
Beck.
Hi.
Peeper.
Hi.
Malone.
Hi.
Sofa.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Lehman. Ayazi.
Hi.
Malay.
Hi.
Uwer.
Hi.
Saran.
Hi.
Vocal singer.
Hi.
13.
Okay, and then lastly, the Resolution 2025-55R, approving temporary construction easement with the Batavia Park District for the Peace Bridge bike ramp area adjacent to the Peace Bridge.
Can I just say something about that before you ask for the motion? The Park District is really excited about this project, you know. When we create TIF districts, it is in order to incentivize developments and make improvements to infrastructure to sort of, to raise the, the water for all, all the ships, right? But during the intervening period of time that the TIF is in place, the increment is being used on all of those projects as opposed to being distributed to the various taxing bodies. This is something that is being done, you know, as, as an amenity to the Park District as well to make an improvement to the bike path that they own. And so it's a good use of the TIF funds. And I, I kind of thank you very much for approving the project because it's a great example of intergovernmental cooperation to create amenities that are good for both and, and great for our residents. So thank you.
Laura, I just have one question. Is there gonna be like a defined of who's responsible for taking care of, you know, whether, you know, where it cuts off from the city, yeah?
So our understanding is that the east side is not maintained during winter months. They, they have a gate that they close off. So that's gonna stay, obviously, their responsibility. This one, we had little discussion, but we didn't really, you know, put a nail in the coffin who is gonna be responsible for maintaining it. However, they asked that when we construct this ramp, we should have the ability to close it off also if we need to. So we are gonna have provision and we are working with V3 on that portion, whether it's a chain link, you know, some kind of a chain that close it off or, or some kind of a gate, you know, for winter time.
And it will need to be closed during times when that path is flooded as well.
I mean, it's, it's a good question and I, I will defer it to Laura. Maybe we can have a discussion with Park District Allison and see whether they would like to take over the maintenance of it too.
Yeah, because I'd like to see it open as much as possible. Even, even through the winter, if it's passable, it should be open. I mean, the ability to be able to use that bike path and not have to go up to the street, to me is even more important in the winter when it's not snow covered or not ice covered, that somebody be able to use that. Because, I mean, if you look at the, the River Walk, the spaces that are out there and everything that's available from the Park District south of downtown, you'd want to figure out how to keep that open. So that's something I think we should pursue and find and figure out. But again, if it's flooded, that's a safety issue, then it needs to be able to be cut off.
I'll have other discussions, thank you.
Yeah, no, and, and I do appreciate where you kind of brought that where this is TIF money, but this is money that we've kind of held back from the Park District, where they could have gotten it by not having that TIF. But this is kind of their contribution to create this that, you know, is important for all residents and accessibility.
Questions, comments? Okay, can I get a motion to recommend a council Resolution 2025-55R? Second. Is that Ayazi and Malay? Roll call please.
Raza.
Hi.
Lancy.
Hi.
Beck.
Hi.
Peeper.
Hi.
Malone.
Hi.
Sofa.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Lehman. Ayazi.
Hi.
Malay.
Hi.
Uwer.
Hi.
Saran.
Hi.
Vocal singer.
Hi.
13.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-58R, authorizing execution of Highway Authority Agreement with SBG Real Estate LLC.
And again, this is gonna be three items in one. You don't have to be there for that, Rahat.
No, I agree.
Okay, no problem. So the SBG Real Estate has owned 24 North Batavia Avenue for several years. And they have been working with the Illinois EPA to remediate an environmental contamination on their site that is due to underground storage tanks that they have had removed. And they have done everything that the IEP has recommended as part of the remediation plan. The last steps before they are able to get a no further remediation letter from IEP are two things that the, the city has to give them. One is to pass a groundwater ordinance. This means that on the area represented in the exhibit that is attached to the ordinance, no one could put a well from which they would draw potable water. So I think that's a pretty, pretty easy one to tackle. The other one is a Highway Authority Agreement. There is an area that is in an exhibit attached to the Highway Authority Agreement that is Houston Street, kind of the, the northern half of that block. I'm sorry, the western half of that block. And there is estimated to be some contaminated soils that are within that area. But the IEP has said that there does not need to be a removal of those soils in order for the 24 North to receive the no further remediation letter. However, as a city, we may incur some future costs in the event, and, and of course, at some point, we're going to have to replace the utilities that are under Houston Street. And when we do that, it's likely that we're going to have to excavate and take off-site some of those contaminated soils. And we will experience costs associated with that in having to test the soils. Because if the test of those soils is more than five years old, the, where we bring the soils to is gonna want an updated test. Also, it costs more to dispose of those contaminated soils than ordinary construction material that we would haul off. And so we did an estimate of the cost of that today. And we doubled that, which is $10,000. And the owners were willing to pay us that amount, representing our possible future costs in exchange for us being willing to sign the Highway Authority Agreement. And so what you have before you today, the Highway Authority Agreement, the Resolution authorizing execution, the ordinance, the groundwater ordinance. And then the third part is the supplemental agreement where the owner has agreed to pay us for doing both of those.
One quick question, that $10,000 end, is that, do we pull onto that and invest it?
Yes, it goes into the general fund and gets invested over the years.
Yeah, I know when we did the last Houston Street work, we had a whole area that was contaminated that we had to have removed and sent out. So I'm sure that there's some of this alongside that building from the, you know, 70 years or whatever. It was a gas station, a service facility and a car dealership. So I'm sure there's something out there.
And if mayor's not gonna say the history of that building, then I, I will. The Avenue Chevrolet that for, for a long time was located out on Randall Road. But the name Avenue Chevrolet came from the fact that its original location was in this building on Batavia Avenue, so.
It started, what, about 1930?
1934.
One of the first Chevrolet dealerships.
They were one of the first 30 in the United States. So I mean, from that perspective, it's historic, but it was, Avenue Motors would still be standing there today if Chevy decided to let them stay, but they pulled their franchise agreement on them and that ended the whole thing there and out on Randall Road. So everything at the end, out on Randall Road's already down. And, you know, now this one, the bank, I believe, still owns this, don't?
Yes.
Yeah.
But this, getting the NFR letter will restore the value to the property and allow it to be marketed for being put back into use, which will be nice.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, I think we'll start out with Resolution 2025-58R, authorizing execution of the Highway Authority Agreement with SBG Real Estate LLC. I get a motion?
I move, so move.
Second. Malay and Ayazi, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then item 11 is Resolution 2025-59R, authorizing execution of the supplemental agreement with SBG Real Estate LLC. Motion? Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, opposed, motion carries. And then the third one would be Ordinance 2025-26, ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or use of potable water supply wells or by any other method. I move. Second. Malay and Ayazi, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries. Those three go on, consent agenda?
Yes.
Great, okay. Sorry, Abby. And then now, next is discussion on the overview of the adoption of the 2021 International Code Series.
Good evening.
Hi, Jeff.
Happy to be here tonight to, to start this process. This is long overdue for us. And the goal tonight is to kind of introduce the material that we'll be discussing with you over the, the next several meetings, updating these various code additions. There are actually 11 codes that we work with that we'll be proposing to update. And we'll go through a brief discussion of each here. Just to give you some background, prior to 2000, there were actually three model codes in the United States. The Boca Code, which kind of was the Midwest and the Northeast. The Southern Building Code, which was obviously in the South. And then the Uniform Building Code, which was the West. Well, those three code groups got together in the mid to late 90s and consolidated into the International Code Council. And they published their first code series in, in 2000. So we currently are under the 2006 edition. There have been several editions since then. And we're proposing now to update to the 2021 additions. The international codes, they regulate everything from residential, commercial, industrial buildings, all various aspects of those codes, mechanical fuel gas, energy efficiency, swimming pools and, and property maintenance, to name a few. They are the widest, widely used codes in the United States, actually almost in the world now. They've gone, they've gone worldwide with these. So they are pretty much the, the standard codes for, for the United States and most of the world. So we will, it kind of allows us to work with a, at least a consistent base set of requirements. You know, various places have their, have their amendments to them, but they at least have the same base, base starting point. And so we'll dive, dive into, the first one is the 2021 International Residential Code or IRC. This is the code that we use to regulate one and two family dwellings and townhomes. So everything residential, short of apartments and, and anything above that. And this covers all the requirements for those types of buildings. Everything from structural, electrical, mechanical is all contained within one code. It kind of consolidates everything in one place. The format of the code is, is the same as the one we are currently under. As you might imagine, there, there's a lot of smaller changes over the years. There are not, there's not anything really significant. What we found is that a lot of our amendments, our current amendments have been incorporated into the code currently. So some of those amendments will be able to be removed. And then some will just be updated to, to the current edition. Probably the most significant change that, for this bill that we'll be proposing is to require, change the requirement and require, actually, require sprinklers and duplexes, which we currently do not. The base code that we are proposing to adopt does require that. We will actually be proposing to remove the requirement for sprinklers in single-family homes. And this has all been done with, working with the fire department. I saw the fire chief earlier, but I don't see him now. But this has all been, we've been discussing this all along with the fire department and they're on board with, with these proposals. So those are probably the most significant changes we'll be looking at for that code. All these codes, as we go through it, they've all had updates for new, new products and new processes. I mean, the industry, industry is always changing, they're always adding new things. I mean, the industry, industry's always changing, they're always adding new things. So a lot of these changes in the code is for, for those updates, so. The next one would be the International Building Code. That is what we use for commercial, industrial, and residential above one and two family and townhomes, so like apartments. This controls everything from the construction, renovation, repair, contains requirements for sprinklers, fire alarms. Most of the time when people think sprinklers, fire alarms, means of egress, those types of things, they think fire code. Actually, that's not true. The requirements are in the building code. The fire code actually uses those requirements or has them in them too, but it actually originates in the building code, so they're in there when the building is built. So in the, in the building code, the biggest change we're going to be bringing forward is a proposal to reduce our minimum square footage for sprinklers in new commercial and industrial buildings. We've, we kind of have gone back and forth a little bit over the years in our discussions with fire on this. I think initially there was a, a thought to maybe go to zero, and I, we kind of realized early on that's probably not feasible, because you always have smaller accessory buildings and garages and different types of things. So I think we have settled on a threshold that is slightly smaller than our current threshold, but is still reasonable for those types of buildings. So we'll be bringing that forward to that. And next is the International Fire Code. The fire code works very closely with the building code. It basically takes over once the building code, once we issue the certificate of occupancy and they're allowed to occupy the building, the fire code takes over and regulates how they use the building. A lot of the processes they put into it, their use of any flammable or hazardous materials, limits on that kind of thing, making sure that, that they're using the building safely. The fire, the fire department, that's one of the reasons the fire department is doing annual inspections every year on buildings is to, is to make sure those requirements are met. So the fire department actually is going to be bringing that forward because that's, that's kind of their charge, so they will be bringing that forward. We'll also be bringing forward the property maintenance code. The property maintenance code is actually our most up-to-date code. We did do this one back in 2015. So it is pretty up-to-date. We will be updating it along with the rest of the series through the 2021. This takes care of things like maintaining all of our properties, deterioration of, of the buildings, weeds, junk storage, those types of things that, that we all hear about on a daily basis. So it will be updating that. We don't believe there's going to be any significant changes to this, just mostly updating to the newer edition, so. Next is the International Mechanical Code, and as it sounds, this, this code has the requirements for all heating, ventilation, the systems that make the air in your, in your building safe, safe to breathe and safe to use. Again, we don't think there's going to be any significant changes, just mainly updates for new products and processes, but don't think there are going to be any significant changes to that. Pretty much the same thing with the International Fuel Gas Code. The Fuel Gas Code and the Mechanical Code kind of work together. The Fuel Gas Code, as, as it sounds, regulates all the piping for fuel, gas, for natural gas or propane, if you're in unincorporated areas. Again, this is mainly going to be an update to a current addition, other than some, some changes for new products. So there's not really any significant changes to these, these requirements. Next, and probably one that will generate some discussion, I'm guessing, is going to be the Energy Code, the Energy Conservation Code. The Energy Code is one of the several codes that the state of Illinois has limited, I don't want to say limited, I guess, but taken over our ability to regulate this. We have a very, we have a couple of options under this code. There is a mandate by state statute that we adopt a minimum, which as of January 1st, 2024, is the 2021 edition of the, of the Energy Code with some specific amendments to Illinois. Or we can adopt the newly organized stretch code, which has actually been available since January of this year of 2025. So our proposal right now, since the stretch code kind of came in a little bit later after we were done reviewing this, is our initial proposal is going to be to adopt the base code as it sits. Then we'll be coming back to you in the very near future with at least a review of the stretch code and whether there's a, you know, interest in adopting that and moving forward with it. The state is under a mandate to update the code, the Energy Code, within, I believe it's 18 months of its publish. They are actually working on the 24 edition right now. They started their review in January. We accept, expect them to adopt or change the base code somewhere around January of 2026 is kind of the, the current thinking. And we also expect them at that time to probably update the stretch code as well. So we'll see, we'll see where that goes. But that's going to be our proposal on that. And that, that controls everything from insulation, air sealing, pretty much anything, anything electric, anything that generates power or has energy associated with it would be under this code. Also, oh, and I see I have a typo in my, in my memo, it's not the 2005 National Electric Code, that's our current adopted code. It will be the actual 2020 National Electric Code. The electric codes are one year behind the other code series. So 2020 is the code that is, that goes along with the 2021 code series for electric. So this controls everything with electric wiring and equipment installations within buildings. Probably the biggest changes in this code, and there have been a lot of them recently, and there, and there will be a lot more moving forward, is solar or photovoltaic and electrical vehicle charging or EV systems. Those requirements have changed huge in the last few years, and they're, and they continue every day to be updated. So there will be a lot of changes relating to those, those types of systems. I don't think we're going to be proposing a lot of amendments other than what we currently have to those codes, just mainly updating for the new systems and the new processes. The Illinois Plumbing Code is the other one that, or one of the other ones that is state mandated. Illinois has had a plumbing code, state plumbing code for as long as I know, I've known. We are allowed with this code to make amendments. However, they do have to be more stringent than the state minimum, and we do have to submit them to the state if we desire to do that, and they have to sign off saying that they are more stringent. We are not proposing any amendments to this. 2014 is actually the most current edition of this. The state only updates this code, I would say, average about every 10 years. So 2014 is, is the most current. I think they probably will be updating it soon, but they have not, they have not started that process at this point, so. The next one is actually the newest code in the series. I believe the first edition was either the 2018, I think, so it's, it's very recent, and that is the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. So they took a lot of the different regulations for swimming pools and, that were spread in different areas of the code, and they brought them all into one location in a new code. And it goes into everything from public pools to private pools that you would have in your yard of your house. Probably the biggest item on this that we'll be bringing forward for discussion is the allowance of a pool cover in lieu of a barrier fence. So that'll be something we'll be discussing. In previous editions, you had to have a barrier fence, sometimes called child, but child barrier. In newer editions, they've actually changed to allow a cover on the pool in lieu of that fence. I'm not a big fan of that, but we will, we'll be bringing, bringing that forward when we bring this code going forward and have more, more in-depth discussion about that. And finally, the last one is actually the International Existing Building Code. This is another code that is newer to the series. Prior to, I believe it was 2012, maybe 2015, existing buildings were a chapter in the building code. Now they have expanded it, there's enough requirements that they've actually expanded it into its own code. And this regulates everything from, basically everything that you, that you do with an existing building. Anytime you renovate it, anytime you add on to it, anytime you completely remodel it, and there are various levels in this code, and based on whatever level of renovation or addition that you're doing, that tells you how far you have to go with requirements to bring the, the building up to the current requirements. Pretty much as you might expect, the more you do, the more you have to bring things up to requirements. And that'll get into a lot of our requirements. Right now, we have amendments in our existing building, or in our building code for how to deal with retrofitting sprinklers and fire alarms and those types of things into existing buildings. Those will now be contained within the existing building code, and we'll have those discussions as we bring this forward. So I guess just to kind of wrap it up, we'll be bringing these to you over the next few meetings, and probably several, you know, maybe two or three of them at a time, depending on the smaller ones probably that take a little, that have a little less, little less amendments and a little less anticipated discussion with them, we'll probably bring forward together. When we get to things like the residential building code, the commercial industrial building code, and the fire code, those are probably ones that, those are the meat, the meat of what we'll be doing. So those kind of control everything. So we'll be probably bringing those forward a little bit, you know, less with everything else, so we have more, you know, more, more opportunity for discussion on those. So that's kind of our thought is probably over the course of maybe three or four meetings or, you know, whatever, whatever it takes, I guess, to bring, you know, to bring it forward as we get into the discussion. So again, this is something that's long overdue. We think this is going to bring us up to speed on a lot of our codes that are, are antiquated, I guess I'll say, and old, so, and get us, you know, the building community wants this because they're used to working under these codes in other communities. It kind of gets us more back on the level playing field with a lot of towns around us that have already done this. So I guess at this point, we're just happy to answer any questions and, and just any initial feedback on, on what we're looking at, so.
Yes. So reading that correctly, is it, is it the case that single, new single-family homes now require sprinklers? So like the Pulte Homes, do they have?
They do not. Under the current edition that we are under, they do not.
Okay.
Under the model code, if you, if you, if we did not amend the model code that we're proposing, they would. We are, we are proposing not to have that requirement, to remove that requirement. And obviously, that can have a lot of more discussion if that's the direction we want to go. But under, under our current requirements, they are not required. Currently, it has to be a townhouse building with three or more units to be able, to be required sprinklers. So duplexes are not required and single-family are not required.
The townhouses that are out here?
The townhouses that are on, that are on, the townhouses that are a part of Pulte's project are sprinklers.
Okay, because they're a four unit.
The single-family are not.
Right.
Do we know roughly, following on that, do we know roughly how much such a system adds cost to duplex units?
We can, we can get those numbers for you. The last time I got those numbers, it's been a few years ago, but the last time I got those numbers, they, there was a pretty wide range. They ranged anywhere from $2.5 to $3.00 a square foot to up to $6.00 a square foot. So it, there was a pretty high range, but we can get an update on those numbers.
Okay, and that's only new. Does that count duplex conversions from single-family home?
It does not.
Okay.
It does not, not in the price. Are you asking, would that include those?
I'm asking, would this new model code, that's only for, going to exist for new duplexes, both from the ground up and not conversions? So if somebody converted a single-family home to a duplex, would they have to install a sprinkler system?
Yes, they would, actually.
Okay.
They would. That would be, that would be considered, that would fall under the existing building code, it would fall under a change of use, and yes, that would mandate that they would. Yeah.
Mark?
Since I probably won't be here for these discussions, the property maintenance code, what do we enforce right now? Because it mentioned painting in there. So if I've got paint chipping on my house, you're going to come around and say I have to repaint my house?
That's an extreme, but, but it is in there? No, we don't, we aren't going to be going, we don't go around currently, and we aren't going to be going around and telling people who have minor chip paint on their house that they have to paint it. If it's significantly deteriorated, yes, yes.
And that, but that, do we have a, I would want to make sure that there's some sort of metric, because my perception of significant may be different than a homeowner, another homeowner. And then we have to be in a, protect ourselves from a standpoint that somebody's like, yeah, but what about that house down the street? You didn't say anything to them, and they haven't done it yet. Or I drove all the way across town, and I said, these houses seem to be like that. It's, I don't know if there's a metric built into it, but there probably should be on any of these things when it comes to a maintenance standpoint that, hey, you're not meeting this, because then it's going to look like we're attacking certain individuals.
Right. We can look at that, sure. Absolutely.
Sure.
Quickly, regarding the pool cover versus the fence, is there regulations on the type of pool cover that would be acceptable in place of a fence? Can we opt out of that if you don't think it's appropriate?
We can look at that. Essentially, what, in, in previous editions of the code, it has always required the barrier fence either around a pool or around, around the yard. And actually, if you use the house as one of the, one of the sides of the, of the barrier, then you had to put alarms on the doors coming out into the pool area. The pool cover was, was previously an exemption that allowed you to eliminate the alarms. That was, that's actually in our current code, that's the way it reads. The new code, they've actually going to allow the automatic pool cover, they call it automatic, it's not really an automatic, to replace the barrier fence. In other words, you could have an in-ground pool with no fence around it, which I have some concerns about. I have some real concerns about it.
Yeah, I think we have a discussion about that.
I was not happy about that change in the code.
And I, I would think that that's got to affect the insurance, you know, to have insurance on something with a fence versus something without a fence.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, it's, they call it automatic, it's not really an automatic. You have, somebody has to actually physically hit the button to close that cover. And part of my concern is that's, that's kind of goes away from the way code has been in the past. The code has been always more of a passive, you know, self-closing hinge on the gate, you walk out, you let go of the gate, and it closes and latches, and you're protected. Under this, you actually have to close it. And if you say, I'm, you know, I'm going to go inside and get drinks or chips, or I'm going to be gone five minutes, five minutes turns into 10 minutes, you're not back, that pool is unprotected. And that is, that's a big concern for me. That's a big concern.
Yeah, this is exciting, right? I guess I'm the nerd who thinks this is exciting. It also feels very daunting, it feels like a lot. So, you know, I know that we often, you know, we get the agendas kind of a, you know, Thursday before or whatever. It'd be really helpful if we could get this sort of stuff with a bit more advanced notice so that maybe I have a little more time to dive in and kind of see what's going on, because it just feels like, it feels like a lot.
Yeah, I mean, if there's things that you're concerned about or that you're questioning or, you know, whether, what we do currently, absolutely, you can reach out to Scott or myself. You know, a lot of this is stuff that's contained in our current codes, it's just updating it to new, newer standards. But yeah, absolutely. If there's anything that, you know, particularly bugs you or that you're, that you're, they're questioning, yeah, definitely reach out, and we'll, we'll be happy to address that or answer that.
Yeah, I have a question. You talk about where the fire goes in once he, once a year to kind of inspect. Do they just inspect like the fire stuff, or do they, are they also looking at like the AC, making sure there's not mold growing on it? And if not, then who inspects that? And how does that work?
I guess mold, mold specifically, since you brought that mold up, is there is nothing in any code about mold. in any code about mold. That's not, that is not, that's not in any, yeah, that's not in any of our codes that we currently have adopted or any of the model codes proposed at this point. Mold is kind of something that they don't deal with from a code standpoint. As far as, to get back to your initial question, does, do the fire companies do that? No. When the fire companies go in, they are specifically looking at things that are in the fire code, things like sprinklers, fire alarms up to date, fire extinguishers up to date, exit paths not blocked, exit doors not blocked, those, you know, those types of things. What kind of products are the people storing? Are they storing, you know, flammable materials out in the middle of an aisle of a building? That's the type of things they're looking at. They, they do not look at, you know, maintenance on ACs or any other type of systems in the building. No, there's really, they're really, that's really put on the, on the building owner, to be honest. That's, that's a maintenance item that is put on the building owner to, as with any other good building owner, that's what they should be doing on a yearly basis, is, is making sure those, those units are serviced, they're checked, they're up, they're in good working order. We typically, at this point, unless we receive a complaint or something from somebody, we don't know that it's, you know, that it's there or that the problem is there. So we would not get involved until they actually decide that that unit needs to be replaced. When that unit needs to be replaced, then as part of our permitting process, we do the inspections on the replacement.
So if somebody had a complaint about it, they could call you and you could go out and do an inspection on that?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
I know that this is, it doesn't happen as often as you probably think it does, but the time I've been on the council, I think we've only done it twice, really, where it's been this.
It should have been done a while ago. We've been delayed on this a couple of times. We typically, and that's a good point to bring up, we, in best-case scenario, we try and do this about every six years. So every other code addition, it's been a while since we've done it. We want to get back onto that schedule, kind of moving forward. We want to get these adopted. You know, our intention probably then would be to adopt the 27 version when that comes out in another three or four years and kind of get back on that every other addition cycle, every six-year cycle, to keep more up to date than we are now. We fell a little behind on this set and want to, want to get it resolved and get it updated.
I think it'll be beneficial for the builders that come here, that they are, that we're on the same playing grounds as the others. So I think that it is very important for us to really make that a priority.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Project status?
Yes. Very excited that at next week's city council meeting, we are going to have the swearing in of our comfort dog, our paw officer, if you will, will be sworn in. At 6:30 PM, if people would like to join River, she's going to take a walk around the River Walk, and any people that would like to join her on that are most welcome. I'm very happy to report that we did receive our reimbursement from HUD for the cost of purchasing 916 First Street for the food pantry. So that represents about, yes, $2 million of our $3 million grants. We are currently reviewing the building plans for the remodeling to be done there prior to the food pantry moving in, which is currently scheduled for September of this year.
You need to give Max some credit for getting that straightened out, because that was kind of a messy situation. They had filed the wrong numbers.
Right.
And we weren't getting the money because of it. He got involved in it and got it all straightened out.
Sure did. Thank you, Max, for your perseverance in getting that done. That's a lot of money. Our website was down for most of today. It was associated with an update that Civic Plus was doing, and then they were only able to bring websites up kind of one by one. And so we had to wait our turn, and I don't think it actually came back up until maybe 3 o'clock this afternoon. But it is back up and running now. Public Works met with the school district for, it's an annual meeting that we have to plan our approach to apply for further safe routes to school funding, to get thorough funding, to assist us with filling in the areas where we don't have sidewalks. We make it a priority, roads that don't have sidewalks on either side, and trying to make all the connections necessary so that students are able to walk to their schools. So we asked the school district for their input on that process. Also, the ramp on the west side of the river, the bike and pedestrian path connection from Union to South Water Street, we hope to be open by the end of April. Kind of follows along Pamarko Drive from where the path ends by the quarry. It is the replacements for the path that was eliminated, that used to go by the old location of the food pantry, that was kind of an area the path fraught with peril, because there were a lot of blind spots there, especially when the vegetation grew in, and it was quite an incline in that area as well. So hopefully, people will find this path a little smoother, even though it does eventually dump out onto the street for a period of time. But we are pursuing an alternative. So we will be applying for grant funding, the same grant funding that we received for moving the food pantry. We feel that we've got a pretty strong application to make through our federal congressional representatives to put a bike path on the shore that is on the east side of the wastewater treatment plant. It's rather an expensive project because there is very little land available at that point, and so much of that path would have to be cantilevered, very similar to what exists just south of the footbridge over here on the east side of the river. And so we will be applying for a $9 million grant to do that portion of the bike path. Yes.
Is the ramp over there not currently open? I've walked along.
I was going to say, I think it's been open for a while, because I've seen people using it. So they must have access to it.
It is opened, but they're still doing some construction in that area where the stairs come by BEI, and they have some restoration. So.
It's open, but it isn't done.
Yeah, I know people have been utilizing it, but we wanted to make an official announcement once all that work is complete, so nobody is in the way.
And then also wanted to let you know that the police department has applied for mini grants through IDOT that would cover overtime for traffic enforcement detail. So, and actually, they applied for it and they received that grant funding. So that's good. And then just to, you know, let everybody know that today was Gary Holmes' last day here, as he begins his retirement. We wish him well, and he certainly has so much to be proud of for his career here, and we thank him very much.
Two things. I just thought about when we talked about the TIF for the ramp. Can TIF funds be used for the feasibility study, economic study and everything for the, for Whitewater Park?
Yes.
So that might be.
So to the extent that there are, yeah, funds left.
And if we have $5.7 million right now, it seems like we would, just something to consider with that.
Yes.
Since we took to the very end to do the ramp and use that money, we, I know we were getting close, and we were trying to come up with ideas, but. Number two, you mentioned the sidewalk program, and it made me think of the streets program. When does that go out for bid?
So we submitted to IDOT a few weeks back. We got comments back last Thursday, Friday, so we are working on addressing those comments and submitting it back to them for approval. We are hoping to advertise it on 22nd, 23rd.
And that's just, that's just for our regular residential streets?
It's for residential street and the sidewalk program, the random sidewalk program that we have.
I don't know what streets, and maybe if somebody would join me on this, I'd like to have a discussion. We've, we talk about in our strategic plan that we want to look for ways to calm traffic. And I don't know what streets are resurfacing, but do we want to, before we go any further, do we want to say, oh, oh, yeah, McKee's coming up, and we're going to, you know, be able to shrink some of the corners? Since we don't know what you're bidding out on, then we don't really, we don't get to talk about it to find out if there's something we would want to do in some of those areas.
I mean, we can share a list of streets that we are potentially going to do next five years. We always have like a working list, if you want to say, for the next three years.
It fluctuates back and forth depending on what gets approved.
Right. So we, we go out and look at those streets in October, November, and then we decide which one we can do next, or which one we should do next year. So we can share that three years working list with you. Or conversely, you can bring up which streets you want to implement the traffic coming, and we can incorporate those and look into that.
Yeah, I just don't think we've had the discussion as part of the strategic plan, but we haven't talked about it. And this, I don't know if this is going to be a missed opportunity with any of the roads that are scheduled for resurfacing this year.
I can't speak on behalf of what the roads are for this year, but we have been actively implementing all the stuff in the Bike and Ped Plan that has been put on the, you know, the 10-year plan, and I know we're ahead of that. So we've done Millview this last year, and we're skipping the southern half of it just to make sure that everybody was in agreement that they liked the striping, and then we'll go back potentially next year. And I believe, Rahat's also going to be, will be looking at getting the streets reevaluated to have those numbers updated and try and get it to be a program that we'll implement with our asset management as well, so we can kind of run some numbers that way.
I'll let you guys that are going to be here decide when you want to have that conversation.
Thanks, Mark.
Anybody else with any others tonight? Okay, now then, I need a motion for executive session for purchase of real estate. Play in, who seconded it? Lancy? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to executive session now.